All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the budget hearing in conjunction with the annual district meeting, the Altoryr School District. I'd like to call the legislature into order. In a moment, I'm going to turn over Mr. Chadlock and Mr. Truitt to go through our projected budget for this year. Before I do that, I just want to thank the staff for the hard work that they put in, us beyond us. So I'm challenging time to fly ahead. And I can't think of a better compliment than, no matter what happens, I really can't think of a better name to go through this. Let's turn it over to Mr. Keller.
So first up for the annual meeting, we traditionally do our budget report or presentation. As part of that, though, I'd like to start off the meeting with an overview of our annual report. Hopefully, as you came in, I'm going to switch to the podium. As you came in, if you didn't have a chance on the back table, there's our annual report. If you didn't have a chance to grab that or you didn't see it in the mail, you can go ahead and grab one off the back table. And I want to really acknowledge Brenda Harris for putting that together. All right. For putting together our annual report and just going to walk us through that 2019-20, annual report, some of the highlights in there. Obviously, everybody was thrown off at the end of the year with the outbreak of COVID and the mandated school shutdowns across the state and across the country. We felt it was appropriate to go ahead and highlight that aspect. It really caused a lot of our teachers, our students, and our families to pivot and really take a different approach to education for the end of the year. Apologize. Tried to silence that three times now. Hey, I want to give a big thank you to all of our retired resees past year. We had a number of staff members that had spent decades of service in the school district. Dana Anderson, who was a teacher at the high school. Barry Butters, a teacher at the high school as well. Renee May, the secretary at Jackson Elementary. Cheryl Michelson, longtime teacher at the high school. Mr. Mark Bogutsey, a health coronary middle school teacher. Susan Wagner, a cook at the high school. Deb Barfolumay, who was a founding teacher at the Alternative High School back in the 90s. And Patricia Butters, who was a teacher at Westside Elementary. Aurora Wedke, a teaching assistant at Westside Elementary. So I want to thank all of them for their service and the great dedication that they showed. This past year was also a very special moment as it marked a centennial for our Elkhorn bands. And the band put together a great concert with alumni and former band members and bringing them together to celebrate the 100 years of being a band in Elkhorn. Year after year, our students continued amazing with the amount of service that they do. This was our United Way Day of Action, where we put in, the students put in hundreds of hours of service around our community. They go to various different locations. You can see South Hall dating the theme of the sign, doing work in the downtown. And I know that in the past, when we've gone out to Old World, Wisconsin, really, they identify a lot of different areas for the kids to help work in, and they just do a great job putting that service together. Our graduation looked very different this past year. But in fact, our real celebration is still coming up on August 6th. There'll be an outside graduation. Unfortunately, due to the safety precautions we happen to take, the city is going to be limited to four tickets for family members and then staff. But we're excited that we can do that in-person graduation. It was something that the students and the families that expressed that they really wanted to make sure that we were able to do. In lieu of the graduation, there were still a number of activities and ceremonies that took place, putting in yard signs to recognize the seniors. The high school staff and administrative team drove all over the region to make sure that students had a sign recognizing their accomplishments. For us, with a high percentage of open enrollment students, that was, you know, pretty long trips for some of those kids to get those signs. So we want to make sure that that still took place. Despite the shutdown and the obstacles, I really want to recognize the crew, Mr. Truitt and his family. They really spearheaded a lot of the Elkhorn FFA plant sales, having the shipments go to his house and making sure that that still took place and was pulled out. And we want to thank all the FFA for all of their work to make sure that that even could be done instantly. There's information on our charter schools. We had some very exciting changes in those programs. The Options Virtual Charter School completed their fifth year in operation and lifted the renewal of their new contract. Our College and Career Academy, formerly known as the Alternative High School, also was awarded two very significant grants. One was a federal charter school grant, which was done to recognize their expansion and their new partnership or expanded partnership with Gateway Technical College, which was, the award was in the amount of $750,000 over five years, but it's giving a lot of resources for training, development, and further programming for those students. In addition, Gateway also received a large grant to help support that transition. So within a few years, we'll see students who are graduating from the Career and College Academy, not just with their high school diploma, but also without to an associate's degree from Gateway Technical College, all covered through their high school education and no cost to the families. Kelly also wrote a grant and received a federal grant close to $1 million for a program called Youth Build. We're very excited about that. We've been looking for ways to build a void in the construction industry and in that training pathway. Youth Build gives them an opportunity to purchase a lot of land in partnership with lower-income housing organizations. And then they are able to, the students go and they build the property. They have professional certifications while they build the house on the property. And then at the end of the house being built, it gets turned over to the low-income housing and helps provide housing for the family. So we're very excited about that program and the opportunities that they have there. We saw people come together with the schooling at home or the remote learning that took place and the need for us to pivot and making sure that our community and our families were fed, especially those in need, considering the amount of people who are displaced out of work. I want to really thank Ellen Leisure and all the food service workers, the volunteers who stepped up and helped with that delivery. Durham Transportation, who helped deliver the meals and took part in that distribution as well. To, at the time when that was printed, the school district served 2,200 to 2,400 meals daily, where also serving families or individuals who are in need that aren't students as well, thanks to generous donations from people within the community. We were averaging close to 200 meals a day through that program. It's been a real big benefit to the community. We also wanted to highlight a program that began just the initial phases of that. And unfortunately, the construction of these units was cut short or impeded with the outbreak of COVID closing the school. But this is part of the project, leads the way, project in cooperation with Wassa Homes and building care boxes that will be placed and are placed in different locations around the community where people can donate non-perishable household goods. Basically, it's like a 24-hour pantry that someone can go to if they have a need. We also want to recognize there's lots of other organizations and individuals recognized in the annual report. But HOSA continues to set a very high bar in one of the leading programs in the entire country and earning international honors as well. We want to congratulate them. Our Skills USA chapter has also continued to grow, and Mr. Chuck Yanter's done a great job leading that. He was awarded the Rice in the Star Award. And at the tech challenge, Mr. Thorson continues to lead students down where they're receiving thousands of years in scholarships, year after year, to go to automotive tech school. And also, they're winning thousands of dollars every year in tools for their program. And he's doing a fantastic job. Our students are doing a great job with that. And we want to recognize them for all of their work as well. Our high school boys' basketball team, we're just declaring that they're state champions because they did not get defeated in the state championship tournament. If anyone wants to challenge it, they can come down and take us on. But they did a fantastic job. The state tournament was unfortunately cut short. The 84 going state. Our boys' swim team took the second place finisher this year. They had another fantastic year. Our cheer team won state in two categories in gymnastics. Went to state for the third year in a row. They placed third this past year as a team. And also recognize Mr. Devon Beatty, who won a phenomenal recognition as the Heisman High School Scholarship recipient in the state of Wisconsin. Our VFW recognized one of our teachers, Maureen Gickel, as the Teacher of the Year and our Herb Cole Education Foundation Principal Leadership Award, which is a very prestigious one, to Mr. Chris Charler, which was awarded. That's a very stiff competition. He was awarded a $6,000 grant for the high school for receiving that award as well. We also had the most teachers or educators recognized, Educators of Promise Program, which originally was planned to have them go to a conference on the training at Fort McCoy. Unfortunately, that got delayed as well. And Mr. Antle was recognized as the Elkhorn Chamber of Commerce Partner of the Year. He's our community engagement coordinator. We've been able to do this and maintain this programming. And I don't want to steal bills from them from the financial reports, but I do want to share this graph that's there. We continue to operate in a very fiscally responsible manner. These are districts that are comparables in our size and our student population. They're on our local district. This is our actual spending per pupil that gets expended for your student. So that's all I have for the annual report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Truitt for the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chadlock. As part of this evening's budget presentation, there's going to be a couple of different data points we're going to take a look at. Starting off, we'll look at some basic facts on our school district and then look at how we compare to a number of school districts in our area and those are our peers that we mash up with. And then take a look at the 2020-21 budget highlights and proposed tax levy. This first line graph shows 29 years of history of enrollment for the Elkhorn Area School District. So it goes back to 1990 through 2019. And you can see almost every year we've had something to do with enrollment. The ones you haven't got is 2011. That's when we started our 4K program. This represents headcount. So headcount would be resident students that are attending our school district and open enrollment students that are coming in for our school district. Now, take a closer look at open enrollment. Put this chart together. This is the net open enrollment by year. So it's showing the difference between students coming in and students going out. So in the early 2006, there was about 27 students. And this past year was over 400 students. You see the growth in that over that time. So where do our resources come from? There's really three main pools of resources that come to the school district. The first one's the local tax levy. The second one is the state aid called the Equalization Aid. And this is the largest aid that comes from the state for public education. And this amount varies by school district based upon the property value behind each and every student. So school districts, they have a large property value behind each and every student. You see less money than those that don't have a large per student. We also receive the number of categorical aids. There's a per pupil amount, $274. There's a number of categorical aids, handicap. There's a county school fund and a transportation aid. And then 11% of our revenues come in the form of open enrollment. So again, that's the dollars that come in for open enrollment students. It's about $8,100 for a regular student, which is over $12,000 for a special ed student. Then the final piece of the pie, special dollars, that represents about 3%. When we take a look at expenditures, the largest category is for salaries or wages. That's about 52% of our expenditures. Health insurance represents about 12%. And the remaining benefits is also about 12%. Remaining benefits include discounts for retirement, social security, dental life, long-term visibility. So when you add those together, about 76% of our resources is people costs, personnel costs. The next category is supplies and equipment in the school district. So this would be everything from paper to computers, tech equipment, workbooks, everything that we use and consume on an yearly basis staff for the schools. About 5% is for transportation services. So this would be home-to-school transportation. That's where we're getting transportation services. 4% would be for utilities to operate our school facilities and also the maintenance of those facilities. About 3% is open enrollment out. So students that are resident students that go to another district goes down and follow those students. So about 3% is the expenditure. 11% comes in as revenues. And then the final portion is other purchase services. So this would include costs associated with running a lot of our software programs, our instructional software licenses to run those on a yearly basis, our management software programs, and any special education programs that we may have from other agencies like ACISA, being that category. This next bar chart shows our long-term debt. Some history here in terms of debt that we've had over the years that are now maturing. And you see a different color for each one of those. The top one being the middle school construction project and the conversion of the old middle school to Jackson Elementary. At this point, we have two years of banking on that debt. That was issued in 2002. It's almost matured. 2015, we had a referendum, and that was for adding a construction space on all of our elementary schools, including Gilasium for Tibbetts in Westside. We put an addition out in the high school. And we also did the tech improvements here at the high school. That was originally issued for 17 years. We have 12 years of banking on that debt. 2016 referendum, that included costs associated with purchasing the land between the high school and middle school, construction improvement for our market street, the fields, the agility center, renovation of this facility, and our greenhouse. Then our newest debt was what was approved by the elected back in April. And that was for the purchase of the St. Cass School of Renovation in that building. That's a 10-year bond issue. In terms of our long-term debt, we are restricted to have debt not exceed 10% of our property values in the school district. And we're just under 2% this time. Equalized value represents the market value of all property within the school district. You can see how that's changed over time. This is determined by, in a part of our revenue on an annual basis. You can see the 90s, early 2000s saw some rapid growth. The economy had a recent in 2008, it went down. And you can see kind of the yield trick again. This is used for distribution of the tax levy across our municipalities. And I think in the annual meeting, you look at page 25 and you can see how that calculation works. So each municipality assesses a dollar amount based on their equalized value. Then that is further divided based upon assessed values within the properties in that municipality. This bar chart shows kind of the historical projected tax rate for the Elkhorn Area School District. Like I referenced, 1993, that's the year when there was significant change in school finance here in Wisconsin. State began to pick up a larger chunk of school cost. And there was also revenue tax. Revenue tax is still with us in that kind of thing. But you can see how the rates have changed over time. So looking at comparables, we'll include the K-12 districts and our conference, some area schools, and then some comparables for our peers. There's been that. So there's 10 districts here, mostly as you're probably familiar with. Ashwaban, obviously, you know where Green Bay is, Lambeth Field. That is Ashwaban School District. The Forest is just north of Milwaukee and then or Madison. And then Alaska is over by La Crosse, is north of La Crosse. You can see kind of enrollment differences between those school districts who are Elkhorn grass. The largest district in this comparable is the Forest. And the smallest is Troy. Another data we come to look at is free reduced lunch eligibility. You can see where Elkhorn's about 32%. You can see the high end is elevated at 65%. Forest is low at 18%. For student expenditures, Mr. Chadlock already referenced this. This is really looking at our operating costs for our school district and divided by our student population or headcount becomes your cost per student. You can see how the districts vary across this. Elkhorn has traditionally been in the lower area for students, probably one of the lowest here in southeast Wisconsin and one of the lowest in the state. Equalized value per student. Again, this is kind of referencing back to how state aids are distributed for school districts in Wisconsin. The higher the valuation, the more the state contributes in terms of state aids. So you'll see in this chart, East Troy is one of the highest and Milton is one of the lowest. So through a calculation, you see how that works out in terms of the state financial support as a percentage. And you see East Troy is one of the lowest at 28%, while Milton is one of the highest at 57%. Fund balance, this is looking at the operating balance of the school district. It's assets minus liabilities is one of the financial indicators how well the school district is doing. Most districts want to have an operating balance for a number of reasons, for cash flow purposes, for a rainy day fund. This is one of the factors that's revealing. We go through our financial analysis. We just had movies do that back in Michigan when we issued debt for the St. Cass project. And we were able to continue with our double A2 rating for the Elkhorn Area School District. This is the tax rate for $1,000 equalized value for area school districts. Elkhorn's probably in the middle when you look at these various school districts. The proposed budget. The state of Wisconsin always adopts a two-year budget. So it's 1921 budget. And within that budget, for this upcoming school year, they're going to increase the revenue cap by $179. Also put the bill out for a, for special education services. And that's the planned budget that we are starting to use for our budget development. However, as everyone's aware, we're also dealing with COVID-19. And that certainly will affect the state budget. And we're using that information and putting our budget together and being aware of that potential impact for our school district. Currently, K-12 education represents about 40% of the state of Wisconsin budget. So certainly, the state of Wisconsin's going to have to do some things with their budget. It's likely that K-12 could be affected by that. Secondly, the other factors, we saw that a lot of dollars that come to ours because the district comes from the state. So both of those things we're looking at as we start developing our budget. It's possible there may be a budget repair bill. You don't know that at this point. I don't think the state knows this at this point. Simply because there may be more information. So for student enrollment, we're assuming kind of conservatively that resident student enrollment will basically manage that as well. We are assuming 40 additional students through the open enrollment program. Budget reduction for savings. Our open liability is actually going down because of other post-deployment benefits. So these are some legacy costs associated with benefits that are going to be retired here in terms of our obligation as a school district. Annual payments for those will be going down. So we're collecting that as part of our budget process. We're also going to utilize some additional federal grants to offset some costs. And then the additional open enrollment will also help in the budget development. Other highlights. We're looking at additional special ed teachers, three, and also looking at two aides at the elementary level. Additional agriculture of English and reading specialists for the high school, along with increasing the family consumer education. Additional staffing with the Options Program, including special ed regular act and administrative position. Increase in annual maintenance, technology budget. That was approved as the second question with the last tax vehicles referendum. And also a new community resilience and social emotional outreach coordinator. It can be funded through our community. And this position will be helping coordinate mental health services here for the school district and the county. Other highlights. At this point, because of some of the uncertainty at the state level, we held in terms of wage and salary adjustments for professional staff, support staff, and administrative staff. Student transportation, is our contract with a transportation contract. It will be going up 3.5%. Our health insurance, it's going to go up 10.5%. Overall, general fund, special education expenditures, we're looking at about a 2.75% increase in those expenditures. And we're assuming the state aids will be above the constant from prior year. Overall, we're looking at approximately 3,540 students, 425 full-time and part-time employees. So the total proposed tax levy is $21,112,000 or 2.68% increase from prior year. This last chart kind of shows you the levying comparison between last year's actual, which would be the 1920 tax levy, and then the proposed levying condition of 2021. We're assuming equalized value increases above 2%. Even with the COVID-19, the equalized value is factored in based on prior year's information. So we will receive that in October. And it's based upon the valuations from the previous January to January. So the change between January of 2019, 2020. And we're looking at the levy rate of about 2.68% or the mill rate going up 0.6 cents. On a $1,000 property value, so on a $200,000 home, that would be a $12 rate. And that concludes the budget presentation.
Questions?
All right, I'm not hearing any questions. So we will turn it over to the legislature and we will move forward to the annual district meeting. So we'll call that to order. Before we get started with that, though, I need to tell the room and what I mean by that is I just need to know who is eligible voter and who isn't. So I just need to read your hand if you are not a resident of the Altoryr School District. In other words, you do not reside within the school district. So we do have a few. So when we do get to voting, please just refrain from looking. So the first order of business here is to elect the chairperson to run this portion of the meeting. So I would look for a nomination for that position.
I nominate Susan Wisely.
We have a nomination of Susan Wisely for the chairperson. I will ask three times to do any nominations. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not hearing any? I would ask that you announce, I would ask for Susan Wisely as chairperson. And we would, on favors, say aye. Aye, opposed, Susan, you're in. Hopefully, you accept that if you ask that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. First, on our district meeting agenda, we have a school board treasures report. Will you?
I don't have anything further to present other than what Mr. Truitt, sorry. Mr. Truitt has already presented and I involve subjects with his presentation.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda, we have to establish salaries, travel reimbursement, and for DMPs for...
We need the meeting acceptance.
We have to accept our report.
Voice.
Looking for a voice acceptance.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the treasurer's report as submitted. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Motion passes. Okay, uh, that's our agenda. We have to establish salaries, travel reimbursements, and for DMPs for school board members. Um, according to here, we have a suggestion. Resolutions are on page eight and the salaries, travel reimbursement, and for DMPs are not changing um, for the 2020, 2021 school year. Um, any questions on that? I'm looking for a motion to approve that and the suggested resolution is for first, uh, resolution A and KJ. I would need someone to be there, please. Any, you don't get paid, so we're going to give it up.
All right. I'll make a motion, um, for reimbursement of salaries according to schedule, resolution A. Salaries and reimbursement of school board members. I move that the following salaries, travel reimbursement, and term DMPs for school board members be approved for the 2020, 2021 school year. President's salary, $80 per board meeting. Vice president, clerk, and treasurer's salary, $60 per board meeting. Members' salary, $50 per board meeting. Travel reimbursement on school board business, IRS allowable amount. Committee meetings, zero to two hours, $30. Two to four hours, $40. Over four hours, uh, board meeting rate. And that's salaries we paid only for those meetings attended.
Thank you, Ed. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the salary and reimbursement of school board members, um, resolution A. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Letting of our general property tax, again, the suggested rego... The suggested, oh, ooh, suggested resolution is on page eight. It is B, allowing in our school tax. And it will need to be read, um, exactly as it's printed in this program. So I'm looking for that motion.
I move that there be levying of school visits, student school tax assistance against all cash flow property within the Elkhorn Area School District. And the sum of not more than $16,501,321 for the general fund, $398,500 for community services fund, and $4,101,299 for the debt service fund for combined total amount of $21 million. $11,120 to operate and renew the school system and finance the debt service and set the system on the basis of the 2020-2020 school budget budget for this meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, let out suggested resolution B, letting of school tax. Um, questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And our finally most important piece of this is, what time shall we find this meeting next? And the suggested time is the same time, six o'clock, and it will be July 26, 2021. Looking for that motion.
I move that the annual meeting begin at 6:00 PM on July 26, 2021.
A second?
Second.
Any concerns or comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there any other business that anyone would like to bring before this annual meeting now would be the time? I see none. So I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.